All right, good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order for Tuesday, October 19th. And first item is the approval of the agenda. And there's been a request to have number three removed until next week.
Move to approve the agenda with amended.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard? I see none in the audience. Do we have any online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Approval minutes from October 5th.
Move to approve minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kaylee and second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We'll move into our 8:35 item, and it's our COVID-19 update. We have our Public Health Director Kathy McKay, and we have our Nursing Director Jamie Hinnan, and we have Becky here with us again this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. Welcome back.
Good morning. Just pull up the slides. Okay, so we'll start with the case data. So as you can see, the active numbers are similar to last week, but they're slightly down in Clay County as of October 18th. We have 368, and last week we had 375. We also seeing, we're seeing a little bit of decrease, excuse me, in the Minnesota cases as well. So 24,587 was last week, and now it's 23,486. So there's a slight decrease. You're seeing the decrease in Cass County. We were watching that data as well, and they did have an increase, peak kind of in their, in this fourth wave sooner than Clay County, but they've also been one of the highest, if not the highest state for the active cases. So they're at 599 this week, and then in North Dakota, they're seeing a decrease as well with 3,210. So our, the last decrease we had was in cases, was a small amount in the week from September 20th through the 27th. We saw a little bit of a decrease in cases. We're looking at the active cases by age. So you can see about a third of the active cases are under 19 years old. We continue to see cases in the school-aged children, so, and that has been kind of an ongoing trend. And looking at the total cases, we now are over 10,000 cases, and so this is the total cases throughout the pandemic across the age groups. And you can see again, it's similar to what we reported last week. And in the Clay County cases per week from July to current, so we're seeing the upward trend. So the week of October 3rd through the 9th, there were 256 cases, which has been the highest number in the fourth wave that we're seeing. So we're still, the waves of a pandemic typically are 10 weeks or so, depending on, and we're probably in the middle or a little bit above that, about four to five weeks. So in that wave for Clay County. So we still, still are in the fourth wave. So, and these are the numbers of cases per week. So you can see, even with, you know, a little bit of decline that we reported today of active cases, you know, we still are not sure if that's going to trend downward. That's our hope, of course, but we'll see if that continues to be a trend downward. Then we'll go to Becky.
Good morning.
Good morning, Becky.
So this first graph again shows Clay County deaths reported per week, and fortunately, we have not had any newly reported deaths since last week, so our death total remains at 98 for the county. And then this graph depicts the number of COVID hospital admissions for Clay County residents per week. So you can see that our numbers have actually dipped a little bit over the past few weeks, which is good news, and we hope that that trend continues. So we had four admissions reported for last week so far. And then this slide breaks down recent hospitalizations of Clay County residents by age. And as you can see, the trend is not changing week to week. The pie chart on the left, we can see that the majority, 65% of those hospitalized since August 1st are under the age of 65. The bar graph on the right shows the breakdown of admissions in each age group. And so the four new admissions that we've had since last week have been in the 20 to 24 age group and the 60 to 69 age groups. And then this hospital capacity information that we have for our local hospital systems is something that had not been available up until last week, so we're thankful to have this information available to us now. So as you can see in the first column, this is staffed ICU beds available. So Ascencia and Fargo currently, or as of yesterday, or as of the 17th, excuse me, had zero available ICU beds. Sanford had five, and the Fargo VA had four. Pediatric ICU beds available for Ascencia were at three available beds and Sanford at one, and those were it statewide, so there was four available pediatric ICU beds available And then this is statewide hospitalization data throughout the state of North Dakota as of yesterday. So there's currently 191 hospitalized due to COVID with 21 in the ICU. Last week, that number hospitalized was at 211, and the number in the ICU was 24. So we have seen a decrease statewide in number of hospitalizations. The chart in the middle shows current hospitalizations broke down by age. So you can see there's currently three pediatric COVID admissions. And then the chart on the right shows the cumulative hospitalizations broken down by age group. And here's the updated graphic from the Sanford Health System. Again, we are continuing to see the same trends. The red people represent those that are not vaccinated, and the white represent those that are vaccinated. So the overwhelming majority of hospitalized cases continue to be among those that are not vaccinated. 29 of the 30 patients on ventilators are not vaccinated. And then the breakthrough data that's put out weekly by the Minnesota Department of Health is shown here. Again, we're seeing a little bit of an increase in the number of breakthrough infections that we're seeing in fully vaccinated individuals. So that number is at 1.441%, so still very low. Breakthrough hospitalizations remain low at 0.085% and breakthrough deaths at 0.007%. So the main message with this graph is just that the vaccines are doing exactly what they are supposed to do. We do expect to see breakthrough infections in individuals, but it's, they are doing their job in keeping people out of the hospital with severe symptoms and reducing deaths.
Jamie.
Jamie?
Excuse me, good morning. First, we'll look at the statewide vaccine data as of October 14th, 2021, for ages 12 and over. So this, this week, the number of people with at least one dose of vaccine is at 73.1%. Last week, we were at 72.8%, and those who've completed the series, last, this week, 69.6%. Last week was at 69.2. So slow progress on there, but I want to draw your attention to the 12 to 15 and 16 to 17 population. Although we've been making some good progress, we're still sitting at 50% roughly for the 12 to 15 who've had that first dose, and not quite 50% for the completed of series, and then 60% for those 16 and 17, and then at 56% of those that have completed the series. And the reason I brought that up is that this week Governor Walz announced that they're doing a campaign called Kids Deserve a Shot Vaccine Incentive Program in Minnesota for those that are 12 to 17 years of age. So a $200 gift card is available, and also the program includes a drawing of 500,000 Minnesota college scholarship drawings. So the first dose needs to begin between October 18th and November 9th, and they need to receive their second dose by November 30th in order to qualify for that incentive. So that's what just started yesterday to try to boost those up. And then I'll just go to the data on the vaccines provided by Clay County Public Health. So our total for Clay County Public Health vaccine provided, 15,697. This last week was our first week with the Pfizer doses, and we provided 66 Pfizer doses, and then just under 10 of the J&amp;J, and then also just under 10 of the Pfizer first and second doses. We continue to try to get those to come in for the first and second doses. Also, just want to remind you that during the beginning of the vaccine, when they were provided in December and January, the Pfizer vaccine went to hospitals, and we don't have a hospital, so we didn't have the Pfizer vaccine available to us. So we are expecting a very large change once the Moderna booster is approved, because that's when we really started to provide big vaccine clinics was with Moderna. So we're planning for that, planning some community events, talking about a Saturday event once Moderna is approved as a booster as well. For this week, we're having at least two clinics. We're trying to do an off-site clinic and get that scheduled this week, but for sure in the Family Service Center on Wednesday, we'll have a 10 to 2 clinic. We're offering Pfizer for second and booster doses, and Johnson &amp; Johnson as well. And then on Thursday, again, a 1:30 to 5:30 clinic, and we're providing Pfizer first dose, second dose, and boosters, and J&amp;J. With having that available last week, we really did work hard to try to get people to come in for those boosters, to get those boosters, or to get all the doses used up that we had. We had an expiration date that we were dealing with last week, so we're thankful to all those that quickly responded and took advantage of those vaccines that were available. And we're going to be in that same scenario this week. We've got Pfizer doses that are going to expire, so we really need to count on people coming out and getting those vaccines. Any questions about that? Should I talk about this? Yes. So we do have the data from the saliva testing site, and they did, as of the 17th, opened up on Sunday, so we're thankful for that. So we have an opportunity for people to come into the Vault Saliva Testing Site in Moorhead. So we've got Monday through Thursday, and then again on Sunday. This last, the week of October 3rd, we had, the number of tests conducted during the week was 585 with a 10.02% positivity rate. So we had a higher positivity rate than what we've seen for a while. The data is not on here from the September 26th. I don't know why it's not on there, but it was not quite that high. And that, the other part of the saliva testing site is very soon, we will be offering, the Vault site will be offering rapid tests as well. So we're excited about that.
That was going to be my next question. I did see some communication between Cass and Clay regarding being overwhelmed with the rapid test. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that, Kathy?
Sure. There was a real limit of getting the rapid tests. There's plenty of opportunity to receive the PCR test, which is the one that takes anywhere from 24 to 48 to sometimes longer to get the results back. And there's so many that are interested in getting a rapid test, so they can either go back to school or work, and so...
Travel.
Pardon me?
Or travel.
Travel.
Or travel, correct. Yeah, we had some that requested that as well. And it was really hard to get the rapid tests. Some of the pharmacies required a two-day notice to get in and get a rapid test, so it was challenging to find a rapid test immediately. And Fargo had, has a test site that they were offering rapid and PCR tests Monday through Friday, and accepting Minnesota residents as well as North Dakota. But as testing increased and more and more people wanted tests, and particularly rapid tests, they became overwhelmed. They just don't have enough staff. They had to work with their long-term care facilities and others. So they really had requested a couple of times about getting another rapid test site in Moorhead. And so I reached out to the State Health Department, and the initial answer was no, that Vault testing would not do rapid tests, they're just doing the PCR. So, you know, it was a little bit frustrating. I reached out again to the State Health Department when I heard that Vault is now considering rapid tests, and said, "We really have a high need in our area," particularly when we're overwhelming the North Dakota side, which is not what we want to be doing, and short of them refusing Minnesota residents. So we just heard yesterday that they're indeed going to offer rapid and Vault, at the Vault testing site. We don't know timeframes or dates yet. We should be hearing that soon, but that was good news, that we can now offer rapid tests to eliminate the large number of people from Clay County and other counties in Minnesota that were overwhelming that Fargo site.
And that's going to be at the same location?
Correct. Yes.
Is there a difference in the rapid testing? Rapid tests came back negative with the state, they must send it into the state, and that came back positive. Are you hearing that happening much, or?
You know, Becky, our epidemiology expert, can explain that a little bit.
Sure, we do every once in a while see some discrepancies where people will go in for a rapid test, and that's initially negative, and then the PCR comes back as positive. So it's not unheard of, and it is usually a rare instance, but it does cause some confusion. And then we just have to look on a case-by-case basis, you know, is the person vaccinated? Are they having symptoms? To try to weigh into the equation of are they truly positive or not. The way the tests are developed, that a false negative rate is much higher than a false positive. So typically, if you, if you do test positive, we go with that, because it's, the test is picking something up that's there. But it, you're correct, it has caused some confusion for some folks.
Commissioner Ebbinger.
Is Vault going to continue to test people from other states with the rapid test? Will that be available, or is it going to be limited?
You know, my hope is that that will be the case. I haven't heard the official information yet from our State Health Department. So that will be my request, that we can also accommodate North Dakota. They've been accommodating us for such a long time. So my request will be that we accept both. I suspect that will be the case, because they still are accepting both for the PCR tests, so I'm assuming that they would want to follow that same protocol. I'll ensure that we at least get that request in.
Just going back to Becky, is the, is the rapid test not considered as accurate as the other test?
So the PCR is considered the gold, the gold standard for testing, but it does, like I said, the false, to get a false positive is extremely rare. So there are some instances, the other way around, where people will test positive on the rapid test, but then negative on the PCR, and those are even more confusing to try to work through. I don't know if that answers your question, but, for the test to turn positive, there has to be viral RNA circulating for it to turn positive, unless there's, you know, some contamination with the testing or some error in the lab side, but that's, you know, very, very rare.
And Kathy, again, in terms of when the rapid test will be available, you'll put out some announcements on that?
Yes, correct. We'll send that out. We'll put it on our website. We'll also post it on our Facebook page, and then get it out to the other, you know, officials in our county, the other cities, so they are aware of when that will be. We understand it'll be next week, but we'll get more information. That was new as of yesterday, so.
Commissioner Kaylee.
So you've been sharing the data from Fargo hospitals. What are we seeing in hospitals and counties surrounding?
You know, we were just on a, well, Steve and I were on the hospital meeting for the Fargo hospitals last Thursday, and we're, I was also on, and Jamie, maybe you were on that one, for hospitals in the Minnesota side. So they have meetings as well in regards to its hospitals, pharmacies, public health agencies are meeting weekly to talk about, mostly about the vaccine, testing sites, and their hospital capacity. And as far as I know, the hospital capacity is the same in Minnesota. They're still seeing a lot of, they're seeing COVID, but they're also seeing all the other things that they need to deal with as a hospital. So we aren't, you know, nobody is like not being able to accept, but it's limited, numbers of ICU beds and those taking up ventilators in the regular hospital bed. So even though maybe the COVID numbers that are hospitalized are much lower than the other things, it still puts the hospitals at a capacity that we are concerned about. So if, if we have less COVID, which is a low percentage, then they have more room for the emergencies that they're seeing. So they're in the same boat as Sanford and Ascencia at this time. They didn't give us the exact figures at our call, but we meet weekly to discuss the hospitalizations in the Minnesota ones. Hopefully that answers.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We'll see you next week.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move, excuse me, we'll move on to item number four, which is a request to fill vacancy for eligible worker in Financial Services Division. And Steve is going to take this for Rhonda this morning, and that is attachment D in your packet.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'll try to step in here and pinch hit. We've had a series of conversations this year about eligibility workers in social services. I think Rhonda shared that she had an employee that they knew, two employees, they knew were going to retire here after about 42 years and, I think, 28 years. What they didn't see was the other worker, who has been here for 27 and a half years, also has decided to retire. And so before you this morning, I have a request from Rhonda to replace the financial eligibility worker with internal, with replacement, if possible. The, the current employees on grade 14, step 12, they would be looking to hire a grade 14, step 6. And Darren's printout, even after payout, they would be looking at about a $6,483 savings for 2022. With that, I'll yield for any questions.
So is there a, is this similar to those other two, where we're looking at hiring early for some training, or?
Well, now they're just looking to replace, they were not aware that this person was considering retirement, and so this was kind of a surprise. And so their last day is November 10th, and so they're just looking to get somebody onboard as quickly as possible.
So the person retiring, their last day is November 10th?
Yeah.
Okay, so this isn't the case where, in those other two situations, we were looking at hiring?
Yes.
For like three to six months, where they'd both be employed, right?
Right, right. That's correct.
All right. Any questions?
Move to approve the decision.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Thank you, Steve. All right, item number five, a request to fill 13-month assistant county attorney position using ARPA funds. County Attorney Brian Melton, good morning, Brian.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I am coming here before you today. I did go to the ARPA committee. Under the ARPA funds, there is a specific line item that allows for hiring of attorneys or other staff to help with backlog that would have been created through the pandemic. We are starting to see some of that backlog have some impact. We've had meetings with the court, public defender's office as a whole group to try to address that backlog or that delta, you know, from March to August when we closed the courts and that amount that was in there. Now we have new cases coming in. We're working old cases, but you're always going to have that delta working its way through, and we're trying to get that, that piece reduced down within a one-year period. And so I'm looking to hire a contract attorney to help with that piece, help reduce caseload. So we have a couple new attorneys. I think, as you know, I came here before you, I lost two, have hired two new attorneys, so that even contributes to some of the stress that's going on now, because they're still learning their jobs and working through the process. But I will be able to hire, and I expect I'll be able to find an experienced attorney that can come in for a 13-month period, help with backlog, and hopefully get us back on track without having that delta always affecting our office. So that's my request. Darren did work through, it'd be 118,088 approximately for the 13-month period. And just for the correction on my information sheet, I think I was asking for December 1 through then all next year, so through January 1st of 2023. I think, oh, 2022, but obviously.
As Brian mentioned, we did discuss this in our ARPA committee, or also known as CARES II Committee, and it was certainly, we recognized the need and the cause of this as being related to COVID, and really felt that this was a good use of ARPA funds, and we recommend to the board that, that this request be approved.
I, I move that this request be approved and be paid for with ARPA funds.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebbinger, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. And I do want to point out, we have a couple of other ARPA topics coming up today, and I, I think we'll be asking Steve to be giving an update soon on where we are with our committed ARPA funds, based on the dollars received so far. So maybe if we can, Steve, if you want to maybe plan on that for next, I don't think you're, unless you're able to do that during your stuff today, but...
Yeah, well, I'll plan to do that next week. I know Darren's been working on our graphs, and so I'll have those prepared for the board next week.
Okay, I just think to keep the board fully aware of where our commitments are and what's still on the table for requests, so that everybody's on board. All right? Okay, so we'll move in then to item number six, and that is a request to move forward with courtroom six project utilizing ARPA funds. And our facilities director, Joe Olson, good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, board members. Yeah, so I'm here today to, to ask the request to move forward with courtroom six project. This is something that we've met many times now with the courts, and to figure out exactly what their design needs are for this courtroom, worked with Brian over here too as well. So basically what we have is, go for the work is to cross the hall there, the old boardroom, to redo that, remodel that. I have quotes here today. What we've done is, I got three, three different types of quotes. I got construction quotes, and TF Powers was 27,650. Delta Design was 34,985. And then with the electrical quotes, 29,800. Citywide Electric was 31,645. And then furniture quote came in at 13,600. Furniture is designed exactly the same company that did this, so you're going to see a, pretty much a mini version of this boardroom is at the end, is what we're going to do. So new carpet, new paint, new LED lighting, and yeah, movable furniture, and so we can have a multi-use type situation over there for the courts. Yeah, so I would, and also what we have in here is some contingency dollars. We're going to be taking the floor out of there, so we may, don't know what we're going to run into, so we have $5,000 budgeted in for that. And then there's a small bathroom added into this project as well. That's a bathroom off the judges, the future judges' chambers, private bathroom that we're going to be building in-house. So, so total project cost is $80,000, and this is part of that, that line item where, where we approved the 900-some thousand on ARPA. And so this would be one of those projects within that, so. And so this would be one of those projects within that, so.
And the original dollar amount we had was considerably more.
About 200,000 is what we budgeted out of that one, so, yep. So project came in pretty lean, so.
That's another example of Joe taking the lead on this in terms of saving our county money. So thank you, Joe, for, once again, stepping up and making it better for our taxpayers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would also comment that the item that we just addressed with our county attorney being related to COVID, certainly having an additional courtroom would help to reduce the backlog that we're seeing because of that huge disruption and how court cases were being, being processed through. So I would make a motion to approve this project as presented with ARPA funds.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion on the motion?
One question. Just refresh my memory, is this going to result in an additional judge? Or are we preparing this in anticipation of a judge being put in position?
Defer to Mr. Ebinger.
Commissioner Ebinger, currently it would be for a visiting judge. So I, I think the expectation plan right now, of course, is there's four sitting judges, there's one referee. So that referee largely handles child support, other things, and that's in that downstairs room regularly reuse. Or again, mostly through Zoom, a lot through Zoom, also does things like commitments, child support, all kinds of pieces. And then regularly they're bringing in a visiting judge from outside or retired judge to come help relieve backlog. I think ultimately the number that we're at is Clay County is probably four and a half judges is what we're allotted for. But I think once the courtroom is done, I think they're always looking to make sure that we have a place for a judge. If, and I would expect that we definitely can use a fifth sitting judge. So I could see that happening within the next year or so, where they would allot that and allow for that. But currently it would be for a visiting judge.
And just given the growth of this county, I think that would be an emphasis for us, so that it can be an emphasis to get a judge assigned in here.
I think so.
That's good news.
All right. Any further discussion? Commissioner Kaylee?
One question about the plan. I see that there's some hash marks for make a false ceiling. Is that like in here where there's a cut?
Yeah, there's currently some big old light tube looking things that run all the way across. So we're going to cut those out and then build this false ceiling and put in LED lighting over that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't mimic exactly this, what that is. Yep, yep.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. We'll move into item number seven while Joe is here, and this is a request to move forward with courthouse carpet and paint project. This is not ARPA funds. This is actually our capital improvement project that had been planned for. So, Joe.
Yes, so this one is basically, this project is to, to replace carpet and paint. And it would be the remaining old carpet and paint from the 2002 addition, I think, project we did. So that's all old the carpet and paint is. Basically mainly, it's all courtrooms and, and that. We've, we, we did about half of this in the last three, four years, and this is the, the last bit of it. So I believe I had attached a map in there too. So I got some, two different types of quotes here. TF Powers Construction, I actually requested a quote for them to do everything carpet paint. They came in 124,000. And then we, we did another one, a sub, sub out contract where we got quotes from subs. And that's under the facilities director project. Superior Carpet and Carpet Garage, Superior Carpet is labor only 28,105. I don't think that's in actually your agenda. I, I didn't, I forgot to add that number in, but it's in your other attachment.
101?
Oh, yeah, 101 is the total project cost, but I, I just forgot to add in Superior Carpets' actual cost of what they are for labor only, so.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah. So 28,105 is what they came in. And then we went out and, and bought the carpet directly, Carpet Garage and FM Flooring. We did a price comparison there. Carpet Garage came in at 34,385, FM Flooring came in at 40,287. And then Matthew Fisher and Paint is, came at 38,940. So requesting to move forward using the subs, Superior Carpet, Carpet Garage and Matthew Fisher Painting, total project cost 101,430.
So we have a request to move forward.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. All right, thank you, Joe.
Yeah, and I'll let you know, actually both projects, courtroom six and this one, is going to start November 1st. Hopefully have everything done January 1st is kind of our, so six weeks, the two-month project for both, so.
Very good, thank you. All right, next we have a request for law enforcement center microphones using ARPA funds. Mark Sloan is going to take this one, and I think there was this request came from our folks at the law enforcement center.
That's correct. Chair and commissioners, request came from our, the users of our large training spaces in the law enforcement center. The building's relatively new. It's three and a half years old. But when we built and designed the audio systems in that room, we weren't, we hadn't been through COVID. And COVID changed how we do business. So what we wanted to do is, the request is to add more microphones. Right now we have one wireless mic in there, so if you've ever been to a meeting and they pass it around, which isn't the most sanitary thing to do nowadays. Plus, we don't have the capability to tie the equipment in that room into video conferencing capabilities like, like, so if we have a remote people attend. So what we're asking for is to add 12 microphones, exactly like these, the same exact microphones as we're using here, and all the equipment it takes to tie that into the system there. It will allow for quite a bit more options as far as how we use that space. We will be given some credit for some of the equipment that we'll be taking out because they have to replace a bunch of the equipment in the rack. And we're getting some refunds for that. But total cost is $25,860. The vendor is Tricor Audio, which is the company that's done all of the work in that space before.
This again was discussed in our ARPA committee, and by showing my age, I asked, why can't we just go to Radio Shack and buy these things for like 50 bucks? But apparently that's a little bit more sophisticated than that. But the recommendation would be to approve the, the.
A comment on that is, they are expensive, these microphones, but if you'll notice, we use them in this space. They don't ever feed back. They, we don't ever have to adjust the volumes on them. They're really pretty amazing pieces of technology, so that's why they cost so much.
I move for approval and use of ARPA funds for this.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Discussion, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. When we first talked about making sure that we had changed, helped change the way Clay County does business, so there's not a disruption in how citizens can receive business. If you've ever been on a Zoom call where you can't hear someone, it's quite frustrating. And since we have had a significant amount of county, small city meetings, and we've also had our intergovernmental retreat over in that training center, it will really be helpful to allow us to continue to have meetings and conduct business so that the public is easily accessible and can hear what's going on. So certainly this will, I think, help justify that it's not just a, one department will benefit from this. It certainly will be the citizens and all of our government departments as well.
I, I, that's excellent information. And also, you know, just training in general, and a lot of our training now is not, we're not traveling for training. We're doing it, you know, through the internet services. And of course, right now, and, and Commissioner Ebinger can probably speak to this, but there is a significant amount of new training that goes on in law enforcement. And a lot of that, be able to have this capability to do this is extremely important. And it goes to exactly what Commissioner Mojo said, is to have it clean and being able to have the good audio and the good video. Commissioner Ebinger?
Yeah, just, I can confirm that there, the training that we've got a schedule isn't just going to be for the sheriff's department, Morehead PD. We're a regional training center is effectively what we become. But also I'm sure Commissioner Campbell remembers that he and Commissioner Wayland and myself and Sheriff Burke was, made all those appearances around town saying that the, these rooms would be used by the public and by other county and city departments and be available to them. It's just living up to that commitment that we made to get a sales tax passed on this. And you see a lot of different uses of that room, but we, it has been limited post-COVID for a lot of reasons. And this is going to be a good fix.
Excellent. So we have the motion, right? Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, our 920 item is highway, highway department has a few items, and it looks like we have a sit-in for Dave. Justin, good morning.
Dave is out this week, so I have two items today. The first item, so we've been working with MnDOT, it's on the George, it's on the Truss Bridge just north of Georgetown. We had to close it for a couple of weeks earlier this fall. There was some sloughing issues on the North Dakota side. And we've been kind of working with MnDOT's bridge department, and they kind of recommended that we get a consultant on to try to develop a long-term monitoring plan. So we've been working with Cass County, MnDOT, and we selected SRF. And they, with working with Cass County, we kind of developed a scope. And the max cost of this contract would be $46,379, spread out over a year and a half to two years. And this would be split 50-50 Clay County and Cass County. And this would kind of help determine what we need to do with this bridge in the future. Traffic counts are really low, and if it's something that we need to survey every week or monthly, just trying to be safe and don't really know what's going on with the bridge.
On these bridges that we share mutually with, with Cass County or Fargo, we alternate whose?
Construction-wise.
Construction-wise, okay. So, so the monitoring and stuff, that, of course, SRF is going to be doing that?
Yep.
For both of us, okay.
And they'll help us develop an actual monitoring plan. So in the future, if it is serving, SRF won't be doing the survey, it'll be us. And then we'll be sending the survey data to SRF to analyze. But if, if we were to tear down that bridge and construct a new one, since we did the Wall Street Bridge, it would be Cass County's turn to do the construction.
And these funds typically come out of our consulting?
Consulting budget, yep.
Line item on your budget?
Yep.
All right, we have a request. Let's towards wishes.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. And I do want to point out, this was brought up to highway tracking, and we did recommend this as well.
And just kind of an update on that bridge too. MnDOT's District Two Bridge Crew will be jacking the bridge sometime either later this week or early next week to reset the rocker bearings. And part of this actual proposal is kind of a jacking plan at where that bridge crew can actually jack that bridge to reset those bearings.
Sounds like more information than I know about, so.
What are rocker bearings?
So the abutments are made to move. So if, they'll actually move either towards the river, towards the slow, or outside. So if it moves, it's not going to completely tip the bridge over. So the abutments actually probably move six inches and the bridge is still structurally sound.
Sounds like a roller coaster ride. Okay.
Along the Red River, they're pretty common because the soils in the Red River are very challenging, especially for a bridge.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Your next item is a recommended approval for the revised number for unit name 109.
Yeah, so this is our mechanics truck. So during the truck or the box build, there were a couple of different items that we determined that were kind of needed. Two lights were added in the cabinets of the truck body. And then we also added Linex to the bed of the truck, and this was not included on the original quote. Just something that we kind of determined during the build that were needed. So this was an additional $2,248, which then brings the cost of the box up to $23,726. And part of when we did initially bring this to board, we said we were going to sell the box off of the old truck on Minbed. And we ended up getting an additional $3,325 than we were originally anticipating, so.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mojo?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Once again, this was talked about in our highway tracking, and we recommend approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are a little bit early here, and I want to, let's take five minutes break, and then if we, if we're still early, we'll get at some committee reports. Well, we're going to reconvene our meeting here, and we'll go to our item number 10, which is information sharing for DNR Wildlife Work Area Boundary. And we have with us this morning, Rob Baden?
Baden.
Baden, Baden with the DNR Area Wildlife, he's a area wildlife supervisor, right?
Correct. Can I take this down?
Yes, you can, absolutely. Good morning, Rob. Welcome.
Morning. And the main reason I'm here is just to inform you guys that the section of wildlife, we've done some boundary changing in the Northwest region. And now Clay County will be managed out of Detroit Lakes. In the past, Fergus Falls, Mike Ayler is probably who you'd seen come, come before you here. So just about a month ago, we kind of formally switched over. So yeah, I'm out of Detroit Lakes. I manage Norman, Menomen, Western Becker. And Clay County kind of makes sense. A lot of our work goes through Norman County, or, you know, on our way to Norman, we drive right through Clay. So it just kind of makes sense. So I just kind of wanted to put a name on the face. I know we don't come in front of you guys a lot, but, you know, typically it's for land acquisition. But I figured it's good to meet constituents here. Morehead has a lot of depredation issues, geese, you know, a lot of critter calls we get from Morehead here too. So I'm kind of learning the area a little bit, but just wanted to introduce myself. If anybody's got any concerns, feel free to, you know, voice them here. But yeah, I'm just kind of learning, and taking over Clay County here will be a fun challenge I'm looking forward to.
So do you reside in Detroit Lakes?
Uh, just north of there. I'm up by Callaway. We have a little acreage.
Oh, okay, all right.
But yeah, I've been here seven years now, so I'm pretty familiar with the area. I'm a Minnesota boy, Shakopee I grew up, so. Yeah, we've got two full-time staff and a full-time OAS in the Detroit Lakes office, so handle a pretty large work area. But we're just kind of reorganizing things, making lines a little bit more efficient hopefully here in, in the future, so.
All right, yes, Commissioner Ebinger?
Just to throw a, a challenge out to you, if you've got an answer for urbanized turkeys, you will hear, this will be on your radar within, within a year from Morehead, not us. Our turkeys are rural, and that's been a huge issue. I was police chief here, and that fell in our lap on many occasions. And, you know, we had South Dakota ready to accept them, and we were going to get them trapped. And then they said, no, they're urbanized, so we can't take them. So it's, it's an issue. And I think, you know, we have, we have some complaints from my constituents down by the river. It's primarily handled by Morehead. But it's, it's an issue.
And I think we did, if I'm correct here, didn't Morehead, City of Morehead go through like some kind of turkey management plan with the DNR and wrote it, if I recall?
Yeah, that was the one that was going to get them sent to South Dakota.
But that fell through.
And it fell through.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, there's not been a, a fix on this yet. I know that we, we recommended spotlighting where they roost to get them to move and a whole lot of other things as we could. We even, even, a couple of them were troublesome, and we disposed of them. But, you know, unless they're really aggressive and have some bad habits, it's pretty much something that people had to live with.
And I suppose you have citizens on both sides of the issue. Some, some love them and some hate them.
Yeah, no way. Can't imagine that.
One, one of the issues is some love to feed them. And it's just like deer, it becomes a, a real nuisance when they, they, and that's the urbanized issue. So I think they, where they're at right now is please get your bird feeders up, don't put. feeders up, don't put feed out for them, and hopefully they'll go out and forage in the woods like God intended. But you're going to hear about this, I can assure you.
I'm sure. This is going to be new to me. You know, Morehead's a fairly urban area, and I don't have that in the rest of Miami. Detroit Lakes is still, there's not even a shooting ordinance in Detroit Lakes right now. I mean, you can hunt in downtown Detroit Lakes if you really want. It just so this is going to be a little different here, Morehead, dealing with Morehead. But thank you for that.
Well, you've just lit it up for my my friend, Chief Todd in Detroit Lakes now.
Well, yeah.
It's worked out good for them. They don't have many issues, but I was amazed when I came there. And there's there's no shooting ordinance in town. Well, and you know, a lot of neighbors on town, they liked deer hunt right on the edge of town and.
I would imagine you'll have a little bit of contact with the folks sitting behind you there with Sheriff Empting and going forward, because this is new. Clay County's all new for your district, right?
Yep, yep. No, I I'm kind of starting and trying to reach out to everybody, yes, with the sheriff's departments and and some of the towns to go into some township board meetings, especially where we have significant land holdings, just trying to at least get out there. I mean, you know, that's one thing we hear in the DNR is we don't listen very well at times where, you know, I don't want that government overreach. I want to be able to be a good neighbor, I guess. So figure this is a good first start.
Well, yeah, thanks for coming and introducing yourself. And I'm sure we'll be probably seeing you on some land acquisition. Things that go on seem to go on quite often with DNR and some other agencies.
Sounds good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our next item is discussion and consideration for approval of a memorandum of understanding for participation in annual operating costs of the Red River Regional Dispatch Center and ongoing licensing fees for computers used by the cities. Good morning, Sheriff Empting.
Good morning.
Deputy Lanson, thank you for being here. Make sure your mics are on.
Thank you.
Green.
Green, all right.
Well, good morning. Thanks for having us today. We're here today to discuss the MOU with our rural cities in regards to our dispatch center. We had been working under the 2010 census since that had had come out. Been waiting for the 2020 census to come out. Obviously, there's been a delay with that due to COVID and things like that. The 2020 census has since come out and has shown that our obligation to pay for a rural dispatch center has dropped from from ten percent to eight point three percent, which has a cost savings not only to Clay County, but also to our rural cities as well. And that would also include for the maintenance fees and things of that nature. Our total obligation minus our nine-one-one fees, our Clay County's total portion is going to be four hundred and twenty-one thousand nine thirty-four. And then when you minus the nine-one-one fees, our total obligation for the budget is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. And that gets broken down as far as to the rural cities for their their population and then the percentage that they that they pay. This memorandum would be a two-year agreement, as that's what some of our rural cities has have requested. So the memorandum that we have for you to consider is a two-year agreement, which we would be having to visit this again in 2024.
All right. The nine-one-one fees, is that is that amount determined each year? Or is that is it just a consistent, that's what we get?
It's my understanding.
I did a historical look on that with the auditor's office, and it's been the same amount for the past 10 years.
That we get?
What we got. I think back in fifteen, Cass County received all of the nine-one-one fees for their side. And that's when the formula changed for the North Dakota side. They took care of everything with their nine-one-one fees because they get a lot more.
I guess my question goes to, you know, why is why is it, why does it not change over a period of time? You know, we've talked here about Clay County being one of the faster growing counties in the state. And you'd think that that would also lend lend to being able to have a significant share of that distribution.
Those are the same questions I have.
I got a commissioner to the left of me who's involved in law enforcement. Maybe he can answer that. But but Commissioner Ebbinger, what do you?
I asked the same question many years ago. And response I got was, we support ARMOUR, which is a backbone system that Cass County, we got them included in North Dakota. And it's a it's a wonderful system. But their answer I got roughly was equivalent to to paraphrase it, we support a lot of things, not just PSAPs, not just dispatch centers with this funding. And and we're constructing a statewide
ARMOUR system.
ARMOUR system. And now you hear explanations of new generation nine-one-one texting. Pretty soon you'll be able to send photos or someday you'll be able to send photos in or video in to a dispatch center, and they'll be able to see it. These things are all being planned. It's a legitimate explanation when you look at North Dakota, where those funds in there almost in their entirety, I think ninety-six percent of it goes to the county. We get about fourteen percent of ours. At least that was the count 10 years ago when I asked the question. I'm sure it's higher now.
I guess I guess my question goes to, if you compare if you compare the revenues received by the state of Minnesota in a in some growing populated areas, you know, I they should be able to fund those things. But then also, I just question why we're stagnant at one hundred and forty-four thousand over a 10-year period. And that isn't a question for Steve or for the sheriff this morning, but it's a question maybe that we can, I think it's worthy of discussing with our legislatures.
There are some things AMC has in their priorities, as you might have seen.
Yeah.
One of the issues we discussed this this week, and it'll be in my report, with Northwestern, Northwest Emergency Radio Committee, is the ARMOUR capable radio equipment, I'm sure as the sheriff knows, is reaching the end of its warranty period. And there's a huge need for replacement all across the state. You look at North Dakota, and they have a system that if you replace this radio equipment that is capable for their state system, they'll give the agencies fifteen hundred dollars for radio, which doesn't cost cover all the costs, but covers the majority of it. We don't have anything in place now. And that's one of the things AMC is talking about, looking at trying to get state funding to help augment some of that. But we just, we don't have the control of the nine-one-one funding, and we don't have the state funding to support the system that I think is necessary. We've got a great system, and they build a good system. But it kind of falls on the counties to carry the load on this stuff.
As far as as far as the user equipment on that, right?
But as far as
The radios and things like?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the state would cover all the cover all the costs associated with maintaining the towers and things like that.
Yeah, and that's that's a great deal. You look at North Dakota, they don't have a system except between what Fargo and Bismarck maybe that is comparable. And so we're lucky to have that. But, you know, it's it's an expense. And I, as long as I have the mic, I do want to extend my appreciation to you of working with our rural communities and bringing some of their concerns to light so that we could address them and we keep the partnership going. I think you took a good leadership position in that, and I'm grateful.
Thank you.
I I do want to comment on that, too. I I'm glad that we got a proposal coming forward. Two-year contract, I think is fine. I, you know, the message again, we've heard about some concerns regarding dispatch and how it's being handled in some of our rural communities. We've we've been sending that message forward, and we've been working on it. We've made a commitment to resolve those issues. And I hope that these small cities are understanding that that doesn't happen overnight, but that we will continue to move forward to, I don't know that you can ever eliminate all problems within dispatch, but to certainly greatly improve them for our rural communities and our rural fire departments and and law enforcement agencies. So I echo Commissioner Ebbinger on that. And I think I give you credit for for your involvement with that. And thank you for doing that. Commissioner Mojo.
Yeah. I think it shows a lot of faith from our small cities that they're willing to enter into a two-year agreement. I think that those of you that serve on that dispatch board, I think we need to be clear that these these communities were ready to leave, but are giving us two years to figure it out. And I I think they understand that change can't happen overnight, but it should happen in two years. And if it doesn't, they're gone. And so, you know, I I know the value in it. I've heard those conversations. It certainly makes sense for us to all be united, however we can be. But I, you know, if it if it doesn't get fixed, we're going to be in the hurt bag. And the services within Clay County will certainly be affected because of it. I do have a follow-up question on that nine-one-one fee. As someone who lives in Minnesota but has a seven oh one cell phone, how do they determine where that nine-one-one fee goes?
That is all done by address.
Okay.
I looked into that, worried that seven oh one numbers, we wouldn't be getting credit for them on the Minnesota side, but it's due to addressing.
Okay. And I agree. I think it's curious that we haven't seen an increase in that in such a, in so many years. If you go to any of the middle schools in Clay County, the amount of cell phones that are present there would certainly justify a significant increase. And so I'm not quite sure why we haven't seen one.
Good point.
Very good point.
Okay, did you have more to present here, or you're just looking for approval of this?
I don't have any further for the presentation. I think we're just looking for the approval of the MOU with our rural cities, and then we'll get that sent out for for signature.
And the breakdown on the percentages of the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand six eighteen, that's based on the 2020 census, correct?
That is correct. Yep. And that would take effect January one of 2022.
Okay, back in business. Sorry for the delay. We had a little technical difficulties here. We were discussing regional dispatch. And Sheriff Empting, you were saying something, and we
We lost it?
We lost it.
I was the cause of the break?
Okay. All right, well, we're back. You have the floor.
All right. I had nothing further for our presentation. No, it was just the approval of the MOU. And we'll get it out to our rural cities for their approval as well.
We have not had a motion yet, I don't believe.
I would move that we prepare an MOU with the cities identified for the annual operating costs of the triple RDC and annual software maintenance costs. And then that'd be a two-year MOU.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebbinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Thanks again. Sheriff, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It looks like we have Rory here on the request to purchase additional Microsoft licensing using ARPA funds. And this again was discussed amongst our ARPA group.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good morning, Commissioners. As explained, I'm here to request the use of American Rescue Plan funds for the purchase of some additional Microsoft licensing to get us through our renewal date of February first of 2022. And some of the needs for this is just with the use of Microsoft Teams, we've had some increased uses of that for, you know, contact tracers, vaccinators, other variable hour staff that normally would not have these type of licensing. But due to the nature of remote work and, you know, remote meetings, now we're seeing an increase in that. And we have, you know, throughout this entire year.
And do we have a do we have a dollar amount?
Yes, sorry. The total dollar amount to get us through until February first would be one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Once again, this was brought before our group, and and the ARPA group did recommend approval of this item.
I would move to approve this request.
Second.
By Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. And I think next week, we also have something coming forward regarding the Family Service Center. Steve, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And at that point in time, maybe we can get that update.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right, thank you, Rory. Okay, we are into committee reports. I'm going to start with Commissioner Ebbinger today.
Hey, Wednesday, the thirteenth, I virtually attended the Northwest Regional Emergency Communication Board meeting held in Thief River Falls. We had a report from the Regional System Administrator, Brian Zastful. There were some concerns on the Morehead radio channels with an excess of busy signals. It was basically overloaded. And they determined that some of the Cass County top group talk groups traffic was coming over into the Morehead channels, and they fixed that. We also discussed the costs, as I as I mentioned earlier, of replacement of radios coming off a warranty. A lot of the departments and the counties in this region went on to the ARMOUR system about seven years ago and got new radios with that. And there currently isn't a real clear identified route by which there can be some financial support in replacing those as they go off warranty. And we're looking at, we did discuss, North Dakota provides grants of fifteen hundred dollars per unit to agencies in North Dakota. This is something we're going to, we're going to continue to try and find ways to assist in in making these replacements. We had voted to include Sanford Health on the regional logger. It will have no impact on services, but Sanford is part of the ARMOUR system in the state of Minnesota. So that required approval. We had a long discussion about nine-one-one operators. All the agencies are having difficulty, just like we are with correctional officers and and some of the positions we have here in the county, they're having trouble finding employees and retaining them. And there were discussions about state moves to certify operators that might make it a little more professional and might result in higher salaries. That would have to be something that's met. And also inclusion in a pension system. On Monday, yesterday, I attended virtually the Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging Board Meeting. We discussed the 2022 plan that was released to the board members yesterday, looked at the Title III requests, process of serving groups. What we want to see in that is that we serve groups that are identified as groups in need, at least to the percentage that they're represented in the community. And those groups are low-income individuals, that's a hundred and fifty percent of poverty level, minorities, isolated individuals, and individual elderly individuals still living at home. We came up with a work plan, or they they presented a work plan. It's based on evaluation of designated goals and their roles in access, administration, development, and advocacy. And we went through a number of those goals. Also discussed the budget. Some of the core budget from 2021 is still available because it's programs that were suspended and has been spent. And also the the focus on spending stimulus funds within the timeframe that they came in. Right now, surplus is not assured because of the census-driven changes in the state's funding formula. So that's all still kind of out there. It's real funny, the advantage of being a rural community may be lost to a lot of communities in Clay County because of the census data and the their proximity to metro areas and a change in the state funding formula. That would include, according to yesterday's discussion, possibly Barnesville, possibly Saban. In the funding formula, they may start being, there may be an effort to treat them as metro area. as metro areas, and some of the funding they get may be eliminated. So particularly in the other counties in our district, that's being watched real closely because they're even more rural than we are. So that's something that's going to develop as the state releases its new funding formulas, and I'll be watching that. We received Title III requests, and the final date for that is this Friday. A number of them have come through. None, they're not accepting any RFPs that are competitive this year. It's only renewals because of the COVID issues. And again, the date to get it in is this Friday. We did a conflict of interest forum, and then we went into breakout groups and had discussions about the Governor's Age Friendly Community Program, where there's going to be some funds available for communities to focus on things that are supportive of seniors. And we discussed transportation needs, including needs in rural areas and EMS, and then social needs of seniors, and some of the things that, points that need to be brought up to address those needs. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Kaylee.
Just, Dave, you and I attended the criminal justice. We sure did. I've got my notes in, I've got my notes in there. Okay. I forgot to put it in my, I write out a report every week. We did attend it. If you've got your notes in front of you.
I was hoping you'd have better ones than I do.
That's one thing about these law enforcement people, they know how to take notes.
Yeah, but I feel like I'm testifying in court and just got caught up short. I can tell you all about this diversion here. Here we go. Thank you. On the 12th, the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee discussed probation violators in North Dakota jails, the Zoom arraignments, public defenders were for it. The defense feels like it's good for them, but there was a pretty long discussion about where the source of that should be. And if they're coming in, in some of the prisons and jails in North Dakota that don't accommodate the technology for having these arraignments on Zoom, and where the requests need to come from, be it from the court, the court clerk's office, or the defense. And that seemed a little unresolved at the end of the discussion. Of course, Mr. Gross and I didn't have a dog in that fight, so I guess we just listened. I took notes. The... There's a review of funding for Department of Correction probation officers and CCA's County Correctional Act personnel, or CCO's County Correctional Officers. They're looking into seeing what works best. There's study underway, and they'll balance future funding based on that study. There's a, one technique they're looking at is dosage supervision. And there's four phases of that: assessment, preparation, planning, and implementation, and evaluation. That's all underway to determine the best way to fund and to assign probation officers to the county. And there was a discussion on sentencing guidelines. And then the discussion on plea agreements and a consensus that that was not of concern anymore. And that'll complete my report. Thank you, Commissioner Gross, for keeping me on task.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee.
I was sort of hoping you would report on the rural city and county meeting, too. That was on the 12th.
Hey, Dave, hey, you want to just give all of our committee reports?
I leave that to my competent colleague to the left.
Well, I missed the very beginning of that meeting because my child had an appointment. But on the 12th, we had the rural city and county biannual meeting. There were updates from the mayors, and that's the bit that I missed, so maybe somebody else could report on that. But we also had updates from department heads and a COVID update from Kathy. It was a good discussion. It's really good to get together in the same room face-to-face and talk about the issues around the county. So thanks to everybody who participated in that. That same day, I also attended the final strategic planning session for the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County. They are putting together the final strategic plan, and it looks good going forward with that organization. On the 15th, we had our Early Childhood Initiative meeting. Last week, I announced that we have a new coordinator for that group, Jody Jordette. And so that was her first meeting with that group. She got to meet the coalition and introduce herself. We had updates from agencies. And then Marcia Erickson from West Central Initiative shared the survey results from a 2021 Clay County COVID recovery survey. There were not many responses to that, and so West Central Initiative is kind of looking at combining the survey responses from the whole coverage area to get a better picture for what's happening in their coverage, those counties and their coverage region. I can share those, the survey results for Clay County with the commissioners. If there's interest, I'll send it to Steve, and he can distribute that. Marcia Erickson also helped us work through our 2022 ECI work plan. She had a long series of questions that really inspired deep thought and open conversation amongst the providers and agencies that are a part of that coalition. It was a good discussion. We went way longer than we were expecting to, and so people started to drop off at the end. But there are big hearts for the kids in our community. And one of the takeaways from that meeting was that we think the public would just be really comforted, knowing that there are such good connections between our servants, service agencies, between Head Start, mental health providers, childcare centers that are a part of this coalition. We do talk to each other regularly. We know who the contact people are in these agencies. Clay County really has a good thing going. So if you're a family with any kind of need in Clay County, if you make that known to any of your agencies or providers that you're working with, there really is a good support system to get you connected up with services. One of the holes that we identified, though, is a lot of the neediest kids that are not involved in Head Start, but maybe kind of fall through the cracks there in between Head Start or in a childcare center that's really connected up, is that those might be the families that are kind of missing getting connected with the services that they need. So moving forward with our work plan, we're going to look at addressing some of those holes. How do we make sure that the kids that are maybe in Head Start part-time are in a childcare setting where they're getting really good quality education and services and stuff? Or how can we better support the friend and family care that these kids are relying on as they grow? So last thing from that discussion was, as we looked at all of the faces involved, we noticed that it was very much middle-aged Caucasian women that are a part of this coalition. And while we love kids and we're passionate about serving them, we need to diversify our coalition. And so that's one of the more immediate action steps moving forward, is just to get a better representation of our community in that coalition. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross?
Last Tuesday, we had a Highway Dracca meeting. We discussed the Georgetown Bridge. We were, which was part of our meeting this morning. The North Broadway Bridge, we're talking about that also. And they are going to close that bridge, I think, as of right now. That's pretty much where we're at in that one. Dave brought along copies of the Georgetown Comstock and Ullin. They're going to put new shops in there, and he gave us a design of what they're planning on doing there. There's discussion on 11th Street underpass, and I think there's one block we're going to try and turn over to Moorhead or somehow, or that there's this, I mean, that's a little ways off yet, but there's discussion on that already. We looked at purchasing what they call a brush mower, which is going to be a little bit better than the one we have, which is not, doesn't do the right job yet. They're trying, they're going to plan on buying another one for, I don't know what I think it's, $13,000. They're looking to purchase one, a new brush mower. I think that would pretty much, we'll discuss what we'll be talking about at the Rural Cities meeting and stuff like that, too. Also, on that day, I had criminal justice, which Dave gave such a good discussion, I mean, of what happened there. And the one thing I did take away from that is that, I mean, that's a good committee. They really had a lot to discuss with each other. But our involvement was limited, you know. I mean, we just sort of sat there and watched. But, I mean, it's definitely a good program, but sometimes I wonder what our involvement is that, because they're so organized. They seem, I mean, all the different departments of the criminal justice. They talk about so much stuff. I wasn't quite, almost like I should go to a class just to learn what they all do, because it's a very good program they have, and it's a good meeting. It was an interesting meeting. Then the small cities meeting, which we already talked about somewhat, the different heads. The only thing is, we had four cities there, and I know I got seven cities in my district. And we'd just like to see more involvement in there, you know. The four cities that were there, I thought was very interesting. All the development that's going on in these four cities, that was good to hear, you know. And it's just, and I'm sure there's some development in the other cities, too, whether it's a business place, whatever, but, excuse me, my voice is going here. Wednesday morning, we had the Build and Improvement Committee, which Joe was here telling us what they, some of the items they're going to do. We're looking at this project over here, the courtroom that they're working on, the power plant generator project that they're going to be working on, Family Service Center safety project update, and there's a tower replacement that we're going to be working on. The fourth floor is also going to be, over the Family Service Center, there's going to be a fit-up project, plus all the storage cameras that are going to be installed. Thursday morning, I had to be on the Yellow Ribbon. We just talked about programs that they're going to be doing for the homeless veterans, you know. There's a, I don't know if you're aware of it now, but there's a homeless veterans in the Dawson Insurance Building over in Fargo. That's where homeless veterans can go to and get some help in there. I think with all the stuff that we've got in Fargo-Moorhead area, hopefully that there's no homeless veterans out there. I think they're pretty well covered. I mean, if they want some help, it's there. And also, they're going to have a, you want to get involved in a trick or trunk or treat, I guess they call it, you know. So if you've got some kits, you want to, October 31st, they're going to have that over, I think, in the VFW parking lot. You know, Charles and Sloan put up something about training for computers for us to watch for SPAMs and phishing and stuff like that. I don't know if you've taken that yet or not. It lasts about 20 minutes. Sounds like you've been taking that.
I did, yeah.
I did, too.
I did. It was quite the experience, yeah.
It was a good session to look what you should be looking for. Yesterday morning, MRC, I don't know, did you get on? I know. I sat there for about an hour, hour and a half, waiting for this technology that we have.
Didn't work.
That's so good. Never did get on, so.
Same.
Nothing to report on that. Okay. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Well, I also had technical difficulties yesterday, but I didn't quite wait as long as Commissioner Gross did to get on. But I appreciate that you would have been there to provide a report if you did. I also attended the small cities meeting last week. Great conversations with all of the communities on issues that they are addressing within their communities. I was really encouraged to hear about all of the housing startups and builds that are happening in all of those communities, anywhere from small starter homes to apartments to some of the larger ones, certainly filling a need within the community, as so many of the conversations we hear countywide really revolve around housing and housing needs. Those communities are also seeing workforce issues, as we have noted, and so I think we'll all be part of discussions in the next few months to see how we can best address those needs. That day, I also attended the County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan Study Review Committee meeting. We had a huge agenda. I don't believe we got through all of it, but certainly had talked a lot about the existing conditions along the roadways and safety. This is really quite an in-depth report. Once it comes out, it will certainly be a great planning document to have. But talked a lot about our future arterial roadway needs and making sure all of those roads are included in the plan process. And the bicycle and pedestrian plan network, I know we talked a lot about that in meetings at MetroCog and seeking public input. So I believe we're going to have another meeting here in the next week or two to finish up that agenda. We're still looking at having a public, another public meeting here in the next month or two to allow the public another opportunity to comment on this plan and submit feedback. So more to come from that. But that concludes my reports.
Thank you. I do note that Frenkie Melton has to leave. I'm going to jump to you before I give mine, and Steve gives his. I understand you might have a couple.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. I do have a 10:30 hearing, and I just wanted to, I didn't know how long it would take, and I was just hoping to jump in to just give the board an update. I know, as the board's well aware, we've done some condemnation action here in the last couple of months. We finished the county-state aid Highway 1 matter. I think at that time, I mentioned we hadn't had condemnation action prior to that one for probably about 15 years. I did just want to mention that next week, I'll get on the board agenda in bringing before the board another condemnation action. I know that Commissioner Gross is familiar with the matter. It's on US Highway 10 through Glendon. We've been waiting to get the actual description of the land area and get that completed. So we'll start that process again on this piece of land with a resolution that I'll be asking the board to be passing. I think the difference on this one will be that it's in regard to an unowned piece of land. It's not owned by anybody or recorded by anyone. It's a sort of anomaly. So most of the action after the board, which I would be asking, and expect the board will take action, that it'll be by publication most of the way through. But it is an important project to work to fix some turn lanes within Glendon so they have better safety for turning for vehicles, that type of thing. And then on top of that, I thought I would just mention the condemnation actions that are going with regard to the diversion action. I did have some discussion, and I know Steve's had a discussion with Chris McShane with Onsted Twitchell, and I expect that he wants to get on the board agenda next week as well to go through and talk about some of the properties that have already been worked through and completed, but that there is one piece of property that will go through condemnation action in regard to that. And that being a very different process than condemnation when we're doing highway. And that's the only thing I think it'll be, it'll be a good news story. it'll be, it'll be a good news story for him to talk about the properties that already have been completed, but the other project of what needs to happen. And there's definitely more district court involvement there. They appoint a three-person panel that are individuals that have real estate experience. Those individuals go out and do evaluation for, for the property itself. There will be a requirement to put some money into trust held by court administration, so I, I expect to explain all that to you and be here next week. So, haven't had a lot of condemnation action in the last fifteen years, but here in the last six months, we've, we've got three of them going. So I just thought I'd bring that up and, and make the board aware of that, and they'll know that those are a couple of things will be on the agenda next week.
Okay, thank you. Just real quickly, Steve, the, thank you, Brian. Do we have a special MCC JPA meeting today at 3:30?
3:30, that's correct.
I just got, one of our members on that never got notice of that.
Oh.
And I guess I'm a little concerned.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Mojo was not notified of that.
Okay.
Meeting. All right, thank you. I will, we'll check on that, but it's, I'll go into my report, and again, some of these things have already been reported on. On October 12th, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and that meeting, Commissioner Gross did a really good job of that. I just want to just add that we, there was also a presentation regarding staff time for county-sponsored projects. There was some, maybe a request that maybe we consider having a fee for that, for that service, and, and I think Commissioner Gross and I felt that, that we weren't really thinking that was the best thing, because we need to be working collaboratively with our cities, and our investment into helping with those projects can also mean benefits to the county already. So, so at this time, I don't think there was any action to, to move that forward, but it was an item of discussion. And then he did mention about the purchase of a brush mower, and that would also be helped be paid for by the selling of the old boom mower that, that was, that we currently have, so. And that, and I think that would go to, I think the plan is for that to go to auction to sell, so. Then, that same day, we had the County Comprehensive Plan. Commissioner Mojo has done a very good job. But the nice thing about going last is I don't have to say too much about the meetings, because they're all covered. So I don't, I don't really have anything to add on that one. At four o'clock that day, we have a new committee group for the diversion that was based on a, a retreat that we had with our full board, and that was talking about governance, and, and I think there was a desire to have a true executive committee, and so we've been working with Jeff Schatz and working on establishing, we call it a task force right now, to recommend what might ultimately be an executive committee and its purpose. A lot of focus has changed now from, from going into and establishing the project to now being more of a, of a, one of making sure that things go well with the P3 contractors and so on and so forth, so. And we, we have a member from each governing entity that's doing that review, and part of the process will be to review all policies that we have and see which ones might need to be modified, and a lot of it goes to our executive director. How much authority are we going to be giving to the executive director moving forward? Because it's, in our, in our previous joint powers, that is quite unclear. It's on to what level that we want to have that done, so. So that's moving forward, and we're, I think we're meeting every other week on that as well. And I did, oh, and then the Rural Cities Meeting was also that day, and that's been, well, I thank you to Commissioner Mojo for filling in for me for, because I was late because of that Governance Task Force meeting, but I agree that it was, it always seems to be a good meeting, and they, they actually think that we should continue that every six months or every, twice a year, so that's a good thing. It must mean that they're getting something out of it as well, and we certainly do as a county board. On the 13th, I had some phone issues, and I had to have my phone redone, and it wiped out all my calendars, so I missed the Building Committee meeting on Wednesday. I apologize for that, but I did get a, an update. I did sit in with Joe and Steve on, on the 14th and got an update on all of what had transpired in that 13th committee meeting. Then, on, yesterday, we had a, a owner's meeting regarding the transfer station, and all is going well there. We spent a lot of time focusing on, yesterday was on Excel Energy and bringing gas to the facility, and which direction that's going to come from, and everything else seems to be moving on schedule. I think pretty soon, we're going to be having the next change order come in that's dealt with some of the items that we've actually talked about, but the official change order has not come through yet. That concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I did participate in highway tracking. That's been covered. I would just make note in regards to the north, north bridge, or, excuse me, North Broadway Bridge. Our, we did send out a survey a couple of weeks ago. I think that survey ends Friday, so our citizens in the north, north part of the, north and east of, of the bridge have the opportunity to provide insight there. Participated in the, in the comp planning. It's been addressed. Also, the rural, rural city and county meeting. Again, I appreciate the participation from the cities and also from our department heads. We're well represented, represented. On the 13th, we had county management. We talked about COVID updates with Kathy, boosters. We had a flu vaccine last week, shots over at Family Service Center and mask mandates. Talked about open enrollment. The packets went out at the end of last week for our employees. They, they can be turned in starting today through November 5th, and again, just an encouragement that even if they do not have any changes, our, our employees still need to sign and return that, and if we can not wait till the last day and have 200 outstanding, HR would be greatly appreciative. We, we also talked about the United Way Campaign for the county. Again, those commitments are online this year, and so encourage our citizens to, to contribute if that's something they choose to do. And also, we talked about making sure that the exit interview process is, is being completed. I think in the workforce challenges that we're seeing and making sure that our, our department heads know, know why, and if there are things that we can do to make it a better experience to keep people here, that that's, that's an important thing. Participated in the Building Committee. That has been addressed. Again, Commissioner Campbell mentioned, we'll probably have a couple more items next week that will come forward out of that discussion for board. That afternoon, I also met with Mark Sloan. You know, we don't have a communications department, per se, but one of the things in regards to workforce, what we've been trying to do is look at different ways to maybe dress up our, our job postings on our, on our webpage and our social media platforms that maybe draws, draw some additional attention. That afternoon, I, I met with our regional or FM area administrators. We talked about ARPA. Cass County, again, is continuing to take the lead on the Triple RDC. They were going to be having some schematics coming forward with the, with the goal to, to get a design here with a price figure to come to everyone to speak about, and we also talked about workforce challenges that they're also facing. Let's see, yesterday, or on the 14th, I participated in the meeting with Kathy and Jamie in regards to the health systems leaders here in the community, and Kathy provided, did provide that update. And then yesterday, participated in the owner's meeting for the Resource Recovery Center. I think it's the first day that we've had a concrete pour schedule. It didn't rain, so we're hoping to, hoping to continue to move forward there. I, I did want to just touch base. This past, this past week, I did receive a notice from Minnesota Board of Soil and Water Resources and Bowser in regards to a request that we've talked about, I guess, ongoing since 2019. We are part of the Wild Rice Watershed Board along with Norman Polk, Menominee, Clearwater, and Becker County. Their, their watershed is structured in one of those six counties that you're paired with one other county, and the larger county is awarded, awarded the manager, manager opportunities. We work with Becker County and have had a history of allowing Becker County to provide its manager for this board's approval. And back in 2019, Becker County, Becker County came forward and had requested that they have the ability to, to assign their manager uninhibited by our board, and that was something that would, that would operate outside of, outside of, I guess, how the watershed is run. And so we've been having ongoing discussions since 2019. The Becker County has made the formal request to go through the redistribution of managers. It's an important thing to do, because when it comes to redistribution by statute, you can only do it once every ten years, and so you want to, you want to, when you do that, you want to, you want to make, that decision is important. And so what we were notified of this past week is that Becker County has, has, had brought forward the request. Because of COVID, they pulled it back, and now they've brought it forward again. And there's going to be a public hearing up at the Wild Rice Watershed District Building on November 3rd, and I've talked to Bowser representatives and Kevin Rude, Executive Director of the Wild Rice, and they've really encouraged us that we want to make sure that our voice is heard in Clay County of how they'll be making the decision as a state board of whether or not they will be honoring the request for Becker County to redistrict at that point. And so they have asked that, that, or I guess they haven't asked, they've encouraged us to, to be present, not only to, to that, be present, but also have some, something written into the public hearing. And so next week, I've been talking with Mr. Melton next week, what we would be looking to do, and after Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Gross are on that, on that committee, would be looking for feedback from this board on what exactly you, what your position would be of, whether it's to support that or if there's any other alternatives.
I think what they're asking for, they want to take over appointment of the two commissioners.
Both?
Yeah, Mr., yeah. Mr. Chair, originally, in our discussions in 19 and 20, they, they asked to have the one vote for themselves. In this, in this last request, they are asking for both.
So we would have zero?
We would, we would be in the situation where we would have to ask Becker County to bring forth our appointment, is, is the understanding that Bowser has shared with, with me.
That sounds like a worse deal than we had when they did the redoing of the Buffalo Red Watershed District. Anyway, I, you know, I certainly, my two cents worth here is we are part of that watershed, and we should certainly have one. You know, we should certainly have one. And again, I, you know, I think, Steve, I, I would, I would like to see us have some data, what, you know, in terms of what are the memberships, you know, part of the population base, the land area base, all of those things we should have in front of us to help make a good determination. And then also, one you can't forget is where does the water flow to? In the case of the Buffalo Red Watershed District, unlike the Wild Rice, every bit of the water through their systems ends up, you know, it ends up going through Clay County. So, and in this case, a lot of it, some of it comes through Clay County, but some also goes through Norman County, but.
They still haven't come forward with any reason why they want to do it. They just say they want to do it, so. Well, like I say, we'll have to come up, or as Steve says, we'll have to come up with a reason, what our standing is.
But I, and I think part of that, we need to, we need to be familiar with all of those different components that need to be looked at.
And, and Mr. Chair, I, I think that that was one of the things that I asked both Bowser and Mr. Rude when we spoke about, you know, through our process, Becker County has provided their interpretation of how their population has grown, but it hasn't come from the watershed. And in, in my discussions with Bowser and in, in discussion with the Wild Rice, I don't know that they're going to have updated census and value information for that hearing, which was a little frustrating, because I think that has a huge impact on what decision would come from this board.
All right. Well, we'll look forward to having that on the agenda next week, too. And then, and I think if we can, if it's possible to have some of that data information brought forward and maybe included in our packet, so our, our commission has an opportunity to see those things. It's land values, population, acreage, all of those types of things, based on each, each county's involvement within the watershed. That can help, that'll help me anyway in determining what's, what's equitable.
Sure.
All right.
That concludes my report.
All right. Colleen, do you have anything for us today? All right. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. Since it came out that there's a special meeting today for the MCC JPA, I was going to comment on this anyways, but I had not gotten that, so thank you for forwarding that. But a comment that I'd had from a couple people was curiosity, but now that we've, the MCC JPA tends to be handling, obviously, all of the land issues within Clay County. The Clay County, or the Diversion Authority's land management has not met since the summer, and it's hard to find the, the information. If you go to the Diversion Authority website, you click on the authority. It has the different committees and then the agendas. There's not really a clear link to the Clay County MCC JPA page, and furthermore, we only have those agendas in our Agenda Center. I really feel something of this magnitude should really have their own page link, so that we can put that on the Diversion Authority link, so Minnesota landowners know where to go for meetings. And I think because there's not a land man, there's not land management meetings right now, it's just kind of, and or public outreach for that matter, it's really hard for citizens to know what's going on. And I, I understand it was oversight for me to probably not get that special meeting invite, but I just Googled MCC JPA special meeting and today's date, and nothing came up. And that's, you know, if I'm on the committee and a commissioner and I can't find that information, how is a citizen supposed to find that information?
Yeah. All right. Well, let's work on that, and let's see if we can improve that and maybe have where our county residents can go to our county website even to find that information and have a link that's easier to find regarding those issues. I know this one is in regard, a special meeting today has to do with two particular landowners who have agreed to a purchase agreement, and so it's somewhat limited to, to that, or it is limited to those, those items, and, and I, again, I apologize that you didn't get that information. You certainly should have. I think today's meeting is, is obviously a really good thing. Anytime that you've come to an agreement with, with landowners on, on coming together with, with an agreement to acquire the land in a positive way, that's good, so. But we will work on, on that link for, for our residents to have an easier ability to access that. All right. With that, I think we are complete, so we are adjourned.